And.
I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for August 5th, 2019 at 6:00 PM, not our noon meeting. With that, Councilmember Vapurzane will be leading us in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we love you, and we thank you for so many reasons, for so many things, for the protection that you provide for us, for those who love us and are willing to sign on the dotted line their lives for our protection, our uniform personnel right here locally, for our military that's here and abroad, for their protection, we ask. And as our hearts are always saddened and we question when we see the things that we saw this weekend with the mass shootings, Father, one of the things that I'm always reminded of is when we push you out, evil will always triumph. And may we make every effort to keep you in everything that we possibly can. And God, I pray that our faith and our trust in you would not waver, but it would be strengthened. I thank you for these who serve in this community, both here on this board and even those who are out cutting the grass. God, there are hot days out there, and every time I drive up and down the Boulevard, I'm always reminded of those who serve our community. I pray that you'd help us this evening to make wise decisions that would honor you. There are many things that are before us this evening that will have long-lasting ramifications. And these are some simple things that we bring to you, and you are a God of, yes, simple things, but you are a God of the impossible. And so for my friend Doug, God, I pray that you'd heal his body, do something that no physician could do, but something that we could look at and see that that was the hand of God. And for that, we ask you, we praise you, we thank you, for you are magnificent and you are wonderful. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Scott, is your light on?
Not on purpose.
Okay, well.
One more time.
Next order of business, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the July 15th regular City Council minutes. You should have a copy of that. If there are no suggested additions or comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Wofford.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes from the July 15th regular City Council meeting. All those in favor, or are there any discussion or comments on that? Addition, subtractions? If not, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. I have public comment, the one public comment card I have is on an issue on the agenda, so we will get to that at the appropriate time. We will move on to the department reports, which will be the Fire Department with Fire Chief Gerald Ezel. If you could please approach the hot seat.
I can approach it. Hot seat. I'm going to keep this kind of short tonight, since you guys have a long agenda, but I just wanted to kind of catch you up to where we're at with the Fire Department right now. We're at about a thousand calls, like 1,300 for the year so far, which puts us right in line with being about 1,650 to 1,700 calls, which is where we've kind of been sitting for a while. As far as firefighters, we hired, we had three additional personnel added. We are finally fully staffed. We had some issues. We hired three individuals at the first of the year. We had one that a couple of days after we made the job offer, ended up with an injury, and we gave him a date that he had to be healed by, and he didn't make it. So we had to rescind the offer and offer it to another person. And another individual that joined us didn't make it through the Fire Academy, figured out they were claustrophobic. So if you're claustrophobic, being a fireman is not in the cards for you. So unfortunately, we lost that individual as well. We also lost one to Little Rock this year. Little Rock Fire actually had a big hiring class, and we lost one individual from our department that went there. But we are finally, we're fully staffed. We hired two right at the first of the year that actually stuck with us and got back to the trucks, and one of those individuals is in the Special Forces in the military, so he is on a deployment currently. I think he got to spend about a month with us on the truck, and then he went on a deployment for six months. From what I understand, what he's saying is he's going to be out when he gets back, so won't be looking at any more deployments for him. But we have two individuals currently at the Fire Academy down in Camden, and they're finishing up in the last week, week and a half of EMT down there, and then they'll start standards and driver operator. So we're looking at probably end of October, first part of November, which is way later than I was hoping to have, but circumstances beyond our control, kind of short changes there. But as far as divisions go, our Fire Marshal's Office is constantly busy. I mean, you know, you can see the growth that's going on, and we've got Domino's Pizza that's doing a remodel. We've got Kimberly Clark that's adding an expansion out there. We had actually a project that we talked a little bit about today earlier in a meeting, that's actually not in the city of Maumell right now. It's on 365, but they're actually building that to Maumell standards. So we got to have a little bit of say in that, along with Oak Grove Fire Department. But they're constantly busy. Our training division that we created last year is doing a phenomenal job right now. Chief Cossey's in charge of the training division. He's developed a couple of different programs. You know, we're rolling with rookie programs now where they actually have checklists that they're having signed off on by their company officer constantly so that they know what their progress is, and we know what their progress is. We also have a driver program that he developed for the tower, the big aerial truck that we have. We want to make sure that the $1.2 million that the city taxpayers invested in that apparatus, make sure that it stays as safe as we possibly can. So we're making sure that our drivers and our firefighters included are going through that training program. That's really all I had for you tonight, unless you guys have questions that I can field for you.
Councilmember Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, just out of curiosity, how do you stand on paramedics? You were in the process for a long time of training.
Paramedics, right now, one of the ones that we lost was actually a paramedic to Little Rock, and Little Rock doesn't run paramedics down there. They're actually considering pushing a program forward with that, but currently, they do not. I had three in class. We lost one out of that class, and of the two remaining, one passed the very first shot last week. The other one missed it by just a little bit, but we're confident he's going to be back. You know, he has to wait 15 days and can retest, and I have no doubt. So when you're taking a paramedic written exam, one person out of the class gets all 150 questions out of a test bank. He got all 150 questions. He finished 147, and we're still kind of hazy on whether or not we've heard that if you don't finish all 150 questions, that it's an automatic fail. He got 147 done, so we're not sure if that's the case, or if he actually did have, you know, just some areas that he needed to concentrate a little harder on. But very bright young man. He was beating himself up. I told him, I said, "Man, don't worry about it. We're not worried about it. I'm not concerned. I know what your attitude is and your work ethic, and I know you're going to get there. It's just a matter of making it happen." But that will put us, I was hoping to be at eight by the end of August. We're going to be at six by the end of August.
So when you deploy engines, you nearly always have a paramedic on them, don't you?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's a good thing. It's a safety of the people.
Both engine companies, I don't guess I've talked to you guys before that or since that, but around March of this year, the Department of Health actually made contact with us, and where we were, I kind of mentioned to you guys before, we were kind of the guinea pig in the state where they were allowing us, if we had a medic, they could put a medic bag on. Suddenly, the end of February, they called and said, "You need to cease and desist what you're doing," and we were like, "What do you mean, we need to cease and desist?" And they're like, "Well, we understand your paramedics are putting bags on the truck." I said, "Yes, at your approval." And so they kind of changed their mind, and what it really boiled down to was they wanted $600 from me for a sticker that goes on the front of each engine company so that we could do that. But anyway, we got that taken care of. We did not see any change in our status. Our paramedics did not stop running calls. They were saying that right off the get-go, but by the time the conversation ended, I said, "You know, I can have the paperwork in your hands with the doctor's signature on it by this afternoon." And they said, "Well, if you can do that, then we'll go ahead and let you continue doing what you're doing." But anyway, both engine companies we have here in town are advanced response vehicles, recognized through the state, and we no longer, we used to work kind of as an arm of MEMS ambulance. We are now our own EMS service. Maumell Fire Department is now recognized through the state as our own EMS agency. It's just a non-transport agency.
That's great. Okay, thank you, Chief.
And Councilmember Saunders, as you know, and probably most of the council does, all of the firefighters are EMTs.
Oh, of course, I was too.
Yes.
Just wanted to pass that on in case someone didn't know. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. There's areas that may, there's a fire station, North Little Rock has a fire station up there at 430 and Maumell Boulevard.
Correct.
Is that their closest one to Maumell?
Yes.
In the area? Now, if there's a medical call or a fire call that comes from departments in North Little Rock, or I think there's one little neighborhood that's just to the south of the Ball fields that's in North Little Rock, who makes that call?
If the call actually goes to the 911 center in North Little Rock, North Little Rock knows where their area is, and they will dispatch accordingly. Now, that being said, if we get dispatched to an area that ends up not being ours, we're going to go ahead and roll on it, and then we'll tell our dispatch to notify North Little Rock to have North Little Rock respond.
All right.
And they kind of do the same thing. I mean, it's back and forth. So if, that's Station Four that you're referring to at the end of the Boulevard, if they get a house fire or a commercial fire or a commercial fire alarm, we are an automatic response with them. They will automatically catch us too, just like we do them. If we catch a house fire here, we get their Engine Four coming our way.
All right.
Plus normally, one of their safety officers, the safety officer that's on will roll with them.
In a way, it's almost a regional thing. It's not, they don't just say, "No, no, you don't respond to this. Everybody comes if you're close or whatever." In fact, some of those areas I was just mentioning may be actually closer to us as the crow flies or whatever.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, there's some areas that we could beat them to, but I mean, it's their city. So I mean, you know, but like I say, if we get a call there, we're not ever going to deny providing a service to somebody. I mean, that's just not, that's not who I am. That's not who any of the guys are on the department. We're going to go ahead and take care of business, and they can come in, and basically, they'll do the report, which, hey, let's face it, firemen hate reports, just like police officers hate reports. So if we can run a call and not have to do the paperwork, and they do, that's all the much better.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as a matter of information for those that are in the room that don't know, I'm assuming we still have what's called a mutual aid agreement.
We do, with the...
Okay, with Oak Grove, North Little Rock?
Correct. Yes, we, difference between mutual aid and automatic aid is mutual aid we have to ask for. Automatic aid is automatically built into the dispatch when it comes out and they punch out whatever engine companies for us, they're also, Engine Four's going to get punched out at the same time. Their dispatch is going to get notified at the same time. Whereas if we have a huge fire and I need Little Rock or somebody like that with some specialized equipment, I would have to notify our dispatch to notify Little Rock, who probably then is going to turn around, and they're going to call the chief or the battalion chief so that they can approve that apparatus leaving their city to come to us. So it's a little longer process that way.
Okay.
Chief, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
At this time, I'd entertain a procedural motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. We'll move on to unfinished business. First order of business is the Planning and Development Task Force. We discussed this a little bit at the last council meeting as to whether or not we wanted to do that. It was asked in a brilliant fashion to think about it for a little while, and so it's back up here. And to be clear, I guess some of the questions last meeting were whether I was pushing this at this time or not, and I am not unless the council is deciding to stand up something like an advanced tree development task force. I would just ask that it be a broader task force that incorporates that at this time. Is there a... I'm going to move on. Councilmember Scott?
I thought you were going to write something up for us to look at. Remember, we were going to all look at it, and then you said, "We'll write something up too," and...
I seem to recall something like that, now that you bring it up. I certainly have not done that.
That's all right.
You gave it to us last time.
That's okay.
Well, I gave something last time, and so I thought the council was going to look at making changes or different proposals. I did come with something.
You did.
Councilmember Gardner?
Could you all come in and help you out? Yeah, so he gave us the, what he thought we could look at. And then I'll say that we started talking about some other things that we might want to throw on as well, and after sleeping on that, I don't know if we need to, I don't want to form a task force just to form a task force. And so I think it needs to have a specific focus. And my concern was if we all kind of added on our little things, that it could grow into something that we didn't need to have. And I think something that I learned from a couple of months ago is that we need to form task forces based off of good information and make sure we're doing the right thing, rather than just getting people together to discuss an issue that may not be an issue. So I appreciate them wrapping it up so quickly and bringing it back to us, saying, "We're doing everything we need to do to be a tree city, but you know, here's some ideas that came out of that. Let's maybe look at redoing our, however Mr. Mayor so eloquently put it in his statement three weeks ago, to look at our overall planning and development and maybe what we could do better to, do better going forward, so."
I want to say that I don't think that the failure to stand up a task force means we're not thinking about this. This is one of the things that I've been working with both Scott and Jim Nary and Judy to look at whether we're not, Ms. Keller, whether or not we want to do charrettes or a comprehensive plan, or what sort of things can we do. I thought the task force was a little premature, but I also know that if I didn't come up with a proposal and the train started down a track, that it might be hard to bring it back in and refocus it. So those things will continue to be looked at, hopefully with a plan someday, soonish. With that, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I was just going to say, at some point, I'd like to do a more comprehensive tree ordinance, but I don't know that forming a task force is really the way to go. It may never get anywhere. So I kind of wanted to just, I'm not going to push for anything right now. I'd like to go back and talk to the Tree Committee and those folks and just kind of see what resources they have to push forward on something like that, because we need people that know more about trees than I do. Anyway, so I'm not ready to push for anything right now.
In the absence of a motion, standing up such a task force, we can move on to the next agenda. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Next order of business is the second reading ordinance 982, amending Chapter 66 regarding street signs. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could read that by title only, please.
We had enacted an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plasky, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 982, and ordinance amending Chapter 66 of the Maumell City Code to require additional street signing indicating that the street is a private street.
This is on second reading, and it'll be on third reading if there's no comments at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on to new business, Resolution 2019-23 regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk Treasure, if you could read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plasky County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2019-23, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Director Trent Carter couldn't be here. He's receiving training. He did send me a text message earlier saying the keys are on his desk, but he advises that no one go open the hood of that car because there is a wasp nest in the, under the front hood somewhere. I have not checked where that is. Councilmember Mosley?
It's an interesting comment. I actually looked at that car when I was coming in earlier, and I noticed the hood was ajar, so I slammed it down. Fortunately, nothing happened. But I guess, I'm interested in some details on this. I know code enforcement, they don't do any high-speed chases or respond to medical calls or have reason to be out on the highway and that sort of thing. So I was kind of interested in some details as to how many miles this car has and what's wrong with it and that sort of thing. Why don't we need to get rid of it? Do you have any idea?
I don't have the miles. I know that that vehicle isn't really used. They, if code enforcement needs to use a vehicle, the code enforcement officer typically drives the pickup truck.
Three pickup trucks and a Blazer out there.
Correct. And I haven't spoken with Trent about, Mr. Carter, about this vehicle, so I don't know specifically. I know that they just don't use it currently.
They wouldn't be, you're not going to be replacing this? I mean, this is just wanting to get rid of it?
I would assume that at some point, they would ask for another vehicle. I don't know that that is a necessary vehicle. I haven't spoke with, I never spoke with Mr. Morley about this, and I haven't spoke with Mr.
Because all I know, you know, is if it's just used for trundling around Maumell and stuff, you know, I've been known to drive vehicles till the wheels fell off, you know, transmission, air conditioner, engine goes bad, something like that. So I don't know. I, can we table, I'd like to make a motion. We just table this, too, and hear from Mr. Carter and see if he's got some details on this.
We have a motion on the floor to table this till the next meeting. Until I hear a second, motion a second. Is there any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed say no. Motion carries. This one will be back. Yay. The next order of business is Resolution 2019-24, amending the 2019 street fund budget. This is just an introduction. This is not designed to be read or voted on at this time. This goes to the issue of the roundabout at Club Manor in Odom South, or the proposed roundabout. We had discussed earlier in the year what the council wanted me to do, whether it was to come forward with a budget resolution or to wait till the budget process. The council decided that like a budget resolution, I postponed this a bit as we were trying to sort out whose responsibility it was to pay for the relocation of the switchgear that is located there, whether Energy would pay for that or not. We don't have a definitive answer. Those that were at the brainstorming session heard a little bit about that, but maybe the city attorney could catch up if anyone wasn't here.
Sure. Their initial response, of course, was that they did not intend to pay for it. So of course, we've been trying to get some more details on that. And so what I had been told was that because Energy installed that equipment prior to their franchise agreement with the city of Maumell, they believed it wasn't subject to the requirement that they move it. It's in our franchise agreement, and so that was their reasoning. I did speak, finally got to their legal department today, yay, and spoke to Matthew Sufferin, and spoke to him about some of the cases that I have been reading, and he assured me that he would go back and look those up and have a look at them and get something back to me, hopefully by the end of the day today. Unfortunately, I did not receive anything by the end of the day today, but hopefully at least in the next couple of days, I'll hear back from him. Any questions? Anybody want to ask any follow-up questions?
And so, seeing no lights appear, this is, this will be on the next City Council agenda with the intent that it'll be read and the council will decide whether to table it, go forward with it, pass it, whatever the opposite of pass is, deny it, decline it, fail it, vote it down. Councilmember Gardner?
I thought you were waiting on questions for city attorneys, so no lights for that. But I called, I feel like I was a little bit behind on the last couple of weeks trying to determine why this was proposed and why this was designed. And I reached out to former Mayor Watson to kind of get a feel for what the thinking was at the time or of why this was proposed. And he shared some information from a study that they did, and it's similar to the study that we all received showing the traffic accident data for that location. And what struck me is that from, and I'll be happy to share this, it's the same-looking report that we've received for the recent accident data, but from July of 11 to July of 15, so four years' worth of data there, there were 43 accidents at that location of Odom South and Club Manor. So 43 accidents, so that averages 10.75, say, just call it 11, averages 11 accidents every year. That was in 2011 to 2015. Now, if you hop forward to 2016 to 2019, this is the information that we received, there were 17 accidents. So for whatever reason, with our population growing out west, on the western end of Odom, somehow Maumell drivers are being a little bit safer, and we've gone from 10.75 accidents a year down to 4.25 accidents a year. So that, I've got no explanation for that, other than just talking to a few folks that maybe say they've changed their traffic patterns so that when they leave, they go a different direction. So I was struggling trying to figure out, you know, I didn't know what this accident data looked like. All I've heard is it was going to be a safety issue, and I didn't know what the numbers looked like. But then once I got the numbers, we're, you know, averaging over the last four years, four accidents over the course of a year. So I just thought that was interesting, and I don't know, I didn't know how we got here since 20, and if you look back at 2018 with what Mr. Mayor sent us earlier, that this intersection wasn't even in the top 10 in terms of locations where accidents happen in our city. So that's just some questions that I had of why we were designing a roundabout for this specific location, when it appears that it's become safer over the years relatively, and it's not even one of the major causes of accidents in our city. So I'll just throw that out there.
Councilmember Vapurzane?
I had the same thought process, because we've been hearing this is the second most dangerous intersection, and although it may have been in the past, it no longer is. So the question I kept looking at was, we're about to spend 1.1 on upwards for this situation. And although I'm not an engineer or anything like that, and I'm not saying we don't need something there, a stoplight would be much less costly and would do the same thing. And there is plenty of room. There are hundreds of yards between the crossover there and Maumell Boulevard that there wouldn't be a backup. Now, again, that we all may have to go into the adaptive situation, but I think we might be able to save ourselves 60 to 70% if we did. And I don't know the total cost on all that, but I'm just looking at the numbers here, thinking, do we want to spend that much on something that is becoming apparently safer or people are doing something different? It's just a thought that I had to throw out there. I agree that we need something, and I agree it's a safety issue, but that we need to throw this much money at something that is not what it was. We, that's all. Thank you.
It might be that just the Talk About Roundabouts makes things safer, which is a bit in favor of that. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, there's two issues that came up before the mayor called on me. In order, the first issue is that it has appeared, it appears that it has gotten safer. I might argue that because in some of the information that we received showing the number of injuries, actually, in 2017, we had five injuries from accidents there. Already this year, in 2019, we've had eight, okay? You also, something that you don't see in here, and I'm still talking about the injuries and the safety issue, because that's all important to me. We've had some extremely serious accidents there. I'm talking about twice, I have personally seen cars T-boned at that intersection so hard that it rolled them down the road, one of them down the road and into the grass. It was just a blessing, the person that got T-boned wasn't killed, okay? I don't know how they kept them from getting severely injured. I don't know how they kept them getting severely injured. Okay, the, boy, don't you hate these senior moments?
I do.
And I'm getting them more as I get more senior.
It'll come back.
Yeah, but I won't have the floor.
No.
No. Okay, it will come back. Go ahead, I'm not going to hold them eaten up.
Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, I would also, actually, I was sitting at Millwood and Malmell Boulevard the other night, and the light is so quick that it'll allow about three cars through, and that's it. And if we had a stoplight at Odom and Club Manor, it could be timed such that the cross traffic would have time for two or three cars to get through while not creating a backup clear to the Boulevard. And I believe at one time, we looked at traffic signals, and they were about $150,000, which is just a fraction of what the roundabout would be. So, it is possible, I used to be just totally against the thing, oh my gosh, the traffic will back up to the Boulevard and everything, but not if it's timed like the Millwood light is. You know, it doesn't have that much traffic that comes from Club Manor, still allow them to cross safely without backing up traffic clear to the Boulevard. It's just, it's just a thought for a fraction of the cost to have a safety element in place at that intersection. Food for thought.
City Attorney Krebs?
I did, and I can't remember, I'm hesitant to bring this up, because I know it's probably maybe not on roll, but I think Caleb may not have been in there at the moment. I do recall that our city engineer, when looking at this, said, this is a perfect intersection for a traffic light. Why are you not, why are you guys not putting a traffic light there? So, and if you've heard that too, I'm sorry for stepping in over your toes, but anyway, I did just want to throw that in.
The engineer also bid on the project and wasn't selected, but, so, for what that's worth. The, but so, let's briefly talk about stoplights. First of all, I'd say I'm not in favor of that until the adaptive lights are in, which are, by the way, that should be parts ordered, that project, they have the notice to proceed, that should be happening. And once we get the timings of those up, they don't operate so much on timing anymore, they operate through communicating, which would actually make that transition a little bit smoother through there, and then it might, those lights can sync up a little bit better, because I presume we'd want the new light to also be adaptive and tie into the current So, just something to think about in terms of that. The, a couple of other things I'll point out is, before we got a light, we'd probably want to run an actual traffic study. We call a traffic study measuring how many cars go through and how fast those cars are. But you can actually get a traffic study that will assess an intersection for whether or not it's a good idea to have that light there, and it'll be able to take into consideration the data from the adaptive lights, like tailor it to that sort of lighting system. And that was an idea that came about through, I reached out to Mayor Watson and got his opinion. Another thing that we've heard a lot with this roundabout is that we think that the prices might be a little bit inflated, and the costs would come in lower, and some people have said significantly lower. Mayor Watson also pointed out that we have the option of putting a project out to bid, seeing what that bid is, and then making a determination as to whether or not we're going to proceed with it. And so, that's on the floor as well. But with those, I will pass the floor to Councilmember Williams.
Okay, I just had a couple of things. When you were talking about the data that you, that you received, I also asked Captain Pickard for some numbers, because I've had two daughters just creamed at Highway 100 and Club, and Odom, right there at that light. So, I was just kind of curious as to which, which intersection would be the worst, and this is what he came up with, that from January 1st to 2016, January 1st, 2016 until July 17, 2019, so three years, there have been 97 vehicle collisions there with 38 injuries and one fatality. So, somebody did actually die at that, at that intersection. So, you know, like you said, and you beat me to it, that, that Club Manor and Odom didn't even make the top 10. This one, I think just about every intersection on Highway 100 did, because people just fly through. And so, and my other question was, and I think Chief Ezell has left the building, has he not? I was just curious as to how the fire department felt about a roundabout. Can you, can I ask you this?
Sure.
I mean, because you're sitting right there, are you dreading a roundabout at Club Manor and Odom, or are you looking forward to it, yay? Or indifferent?
If you're asking my opinion?
Yeah, well.
Me personally, my opinion, I would rather see a stoplight than a roundabout. I just, you know, I sat and listened to the, I guess, the presentation by the engineers whenever they actually had the roundabout, and, you know, they said, well, this is 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock traffic that you're seeing travel through this. And I said, yeah, but you're also, it's awfully easy on a computer program to make people yield to somebody that's going around that roundabout and going off on Club Manor. And he goes, well, that's where you turn your right turn signal on to signal those people that are coming, that you're going straight across on Club Manor. And I said, I just don't think that's, it's going to work.
But it would appear to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, it would be just cumbersome to try to move a fire truck around a roundabout. I mean, I'm just.
I think with the size that we were looking at, I don't think we'd have an issue with getting the truck around it. I mean, I just think, me personally, I think that a stoplight is a safer intersection than a roundabout. I just, I mean, eventually, when people got used to the roundabouts, it would be okay, but I think we would have some issues right off the get-go with a roundabout and that. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yeah, I had some of the same concerns about the roundabout as the chief expressed, about people trying to get across, and then being blindsided into rear quarter panel, but that wasn't what I want to talk about. I did, in a way, these are kind of combination questions, observations. This, and this is a conversation I've got with other people, that it would probably almost cost us less to put in a traffic light than just the expense of moving the power station, the junction box that we're dealing with Energy. And the question I kind of have is, how would the timetable be if we did decide to do a traffic light instead of a roundabout? What would the timetable be to complete a traffic light as opposed to a roundabout, you know, concerning the, you know, safety factors? I would imagine timeliness would be a factor that we would want to consider, too.
I would imagine the, so assuming we wanted to tie that into the adaptive system, and not wanting to, and we might encounter quite a bit of pushback throwing a light that close to the, a state highway with all the adaptive lights until they got that up and running. But I presume it'd be quicker. The price range that I'd heard was closer to $300,000 than $150,000, but that's still significantly less for that. Just to point out, it'd be, it'd be a switch from what most cities are trying to go to. But, most cities aren't paying for a roundabout, so that's the dilemma. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of chime in, and say, yeah, I'm beginning to lean more toward a traffic light, too, just strictly from the cost. And I'd prefer a roundabout, but it just doesn't seem to be going together really easy, and so I'm open for that, doing the, doing the stoplight instead, but I guess there's still some more information to come in, so. But, anyway, I'm open-minded.
What information are you referring to, Mr. Mosley?
Oh, I think you mentioned you, you had some more data or something coming in here in the.
Traffic study?
Traffic study, or still this box, this moving box.
To find out about whether we're going to be adding to the 1.1 million?
Yeah.
Of course, we've also designed the Rolls Royce of roundabouts. We can scale the roundabout back, targeting some of the aesthetics, the center median.
Yeah, but if it comes out 1.4 million to 300,000, I'm definitely in for the stoplight.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. As everybody knows, I've been a proponent of the roundabout for a long time, but I have no problem with a traffic signal. In fact, when I first started in trying to get this roundabout, that was the first thing I went after, was a traffic signal. Now, I don't know, I'm not an attorney, you know, I don't work for the highway department, but I was told that we could not put a traffic signal there that close to a state highway with a traffic signal. Now, I don't know whether that's true or not, that's something I'd like to know, because I'm also concerned about the cost, but I'm concerned about the safety. And I think we could accomplish that with a traffic signal if, if we're allowed to. So, I may have been told incorrectly, I'm not going to mention the person that told me that, I don't think it's appropriate or needed, but.
What are you looking at me for?
Well, because that's where he used to sit. No, I'm sorry.
And I did the same thing.
Mayor Watson commented that he didn't think that they, highway department.
We haven't really talked about any of the cons of the red light at that location, and there are, there are a list, whether they outweigh it one way or the other, is for the council to decide. Councilmember Scott?
Just to.
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Well, I was just going to say, I just want you to know, I don't have a problem with a traffic signal if we're allowed to do it, and it'll accomplish our goals. Cheaper. I don't have a problem with that. Okay, I'm finished.
Councilmember Scott?
I was going to weigh in on what Councilmember Williams talked about, the number of accidents on Malmell Boulevard and the cross streets. The state fixes the speed limit going through town. I remember when they changed it to 45 miles an hour, the city wasn't even aware of it. They just came out one day and changed this, this traffic signs from 50 to 45. But you notice that once it gets to South Odom, it's back to 50 again. Can we appeal to the state? Because we know that there's, there's 10 miles per hour latitude, so if it's 45, people drive 55. If it's 50, people drive 60. Would we be within our rights as a city to go to the state and say, this is a congested area, there's cross traffic where there aren't, aren't stoplights? Could we reduce the speed limit going through town to maybe 40 miles an hour all the way through town?
Yeah, so we, it would be well within our rights to ask the state to do that. So, there's also been some issues that I've discussed with the North Little Rock traffic engineer, as they'll be the ones operating our lights, once the adaptive system goes in, and we think there's some things that can be done to change the sequencing of the lights, or the timing of the lights, that might make it safer, for instance, going from a lagging left turn to a leading left turn, that is, as you're headed northbound on Highway 100 and turning left onto Odom South. If we allow a leading turn, which means everyone's got a red, and then you have the right to turn left first, and you have the right-of-way at the beginning of that light sequence, we think it may be a little bit safer, but he didn't want to just agree to that until they had a chance to hop in and take a look at it. But so, there's a few things with that intersection that we can do. I should also point out, for years and years and years and years and years, I felt like we weren't allowed to do roundabouts on a state highway. That seems to be the opposite direction that the state is pushing these days. And so, I'm not suggesting we start a roundabout discussion there, but just know that for years, I think we thought that that couldn't be the case. It very well can be, and states are pushing for that, or the state is pushing for that when you, when they have cities kind of like ours championing that process. Councilmember Williams?
Well, I agree with, with Marion, as far as, you know, it's rare, and I travel a lot, I drive through a whole lot of cities, that you are allowed to go 50 or 60 miles an hour down through the main drag of a city. I mean, you, that's almost unheard of. Now, I mean, slowing people down through there, and Sam, maybe I'm right about that, right? Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, dear.
Yes, dear.
But reducing the speed.
And you wiped out the next thing you said.
Smart man.
Mm-hmm. Reducing the speed through there seems to be, I think that would help matters as far as these accidents along Highway 100. I think that's going to, I think that's necessary to do. Now, you know, a roundabout right there, that intersection would slow traffic down, but I think reducing traffic would be cheaper than installing a roundabout at Highway 100 and Odom. So, yeah, I think if, if we can ask the city to reduce the speed through town.
Definitely ask the city.
I mean, not ask the city, ask the state.
We can't, I don't know, I don't know that slower means safer, but if we're making that assumption, then sure.
I think it would.
I do, too. Probably.
Okay, Cal, are you finished, Ms. Williams? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yeah, you did, and I'm done.
I'm trying to keep up with the order of all these lights popping on. Councilmember Tierney?
On the subject of the dangerous intersections we have, all of them seeming to line up on Malmell Boulevard, one thing I've seen other cities do, because in Arkansas, everybody seems to think that a yellow does not mean slow down for right-of-way, means get out of my way, and they speed up, and you always have to stop at every light, look for two or three seconds, and be, okay, is anybody else still coming through?
Oh, that's terrible in Little Rock.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And so, but I've seen some places actually add like a two or three staggered stoplight at both the intersections to keep traffic from moving out before, because not everybody looks to see if anybody's running that light. And have we considered maybe doing that at those really dangerous intersections? Maybe stagger it one or two seconds of both ways red before you let traffic start moving in the, out into the danger zone?
If you're asking if I've considered that, I have not.
Is that something the adaptive system would be able to handle?
It's something, so, we lose control of the lights with the adaptive traffic signal. It's something that you would take to North Little Rock and present to them. I think we can deal with the timing currently, though I don't think that that's something that we could handle. We'd bring in a consultant to change the timing, is that how we handle it, Mike? Changing the timing on the lights?
Yeah, I don't think that that's something that we would do in-house.
But I guess it's a possibility.
Just at those most dangerous intersections.
I can look into that. Who just hit their light?
No.
Saunders is first.
Okay, Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you again, Mayor. This is my night's talk, I guess. I think we, as a group, should be careful about comparing the top 10 to Odom South. And I'm not saying we don't need a turn, that a turn signal won't do it, but we need to do something. But to compare and contrast that intersection to the intersections on the Boulevard is like comparing apples and oranges, okay? For two reasons. One, it's different traffic patterns, different speeds, which we were just talking about. And, two, because we have no control over what happens on that Boulevard, all we can do is suggest, and like the adaptive system, pay some money to get it, make it happen. But we have no control over that, the state has control. We have control over South Odom and Club Manor, and I think it's, it would be terrible if we don't do something, whatever it is, you know? Because we can control that. So, okay, that's all I got.
Senator Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming back to the issue at hand here with the roundabout, what would be the cost? Would there be any additional cost for us to put this to bid? So we can have a definitive answer of what?
Not that we already haven't contracted to do as is.
Yeah.
We have bidding services as part of our current contract with the.
Would we incur any more money as a city if we moved forward and had them bid it out for us?
Nothing above the current contract price.
Okay.
As far as I know.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a problem with, if there, if we have already paid the money to have them bid it out, let them bid it out, and I would ask that the council have the right to reject those bids if they come in at an amount that we don't approve of. But I've been trying to think over the last couple of weeks, what's the dollar figure that I would say, yes, this is something that I would be happy to go with if it were a roundabout? And I don't know where that number is, if you're even 500,000 or 600,000 or 700,000, I still would have issues with that for this intersection only having four accidents on average a year. But if it's not going to cost us anything to, to at least bid it out, and then let the, let them come back and give us the right to reject offers, I'm not sure how that would look from a legal standpoint, but if we can reject the offer, I'd be okay with letting it go forward. But I just, I don't want to spend any money, more money on this design than we already have, or that we've already contracted to spend, because it's pretty apparent how the council feels about it, so.
I'm sending myself emails with notes to do, not texting people. Seeing nothing additional as far as comments, we can move on to the next issue, which is the first reading of ordinance 983 to comply with Act 999. Madam City Clerk Treacher, if you could read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 983, an ordinance to amend Ordinance 972 to comply with Act 999 of the 92nd General Assembly of the Arkansas Legislature, the Small Wireless Facility Deployment Act.
This is an ordinance suggested by the city attorney, so perhaps I can let her explain why we are here.
Sure. So I apologize for having to bring small cells back yet again, but the law just keeps changing. And so, Act 999 gave us some different requirements here in Arkansas for how the state wants to see us go through this process, and all of the changes that I have suggested to the ordinance are basically taken directly from that new statute. So if there are any specific questions about the changes, that might be the way to address them. Be happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Gardner? I noticed some of the fees were being reduced, is that something that-
That's in the act.
Man, okay.
Yes, it's a little sad.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no further comments, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. The next order of business is the results of the Traffic and Parking Committee. We have had two Traffic and Parking Committees. The first one was Tuesday at 6:00, wherein the Traffic and Parking Committee passed three different motions. One motion was to prohibit dropping off or picking up from the Jess Odom Community Center upper-level parking lot, that is, for the school. Another motion was made and passed prohibiting right turns into Academic Plus Charter School parking lot between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., except for buses. That was passed. Motion was also made and seconded and passed prohibiting left turns between the hours of 3:00 and 4:00 p.m. out of the lower-level parking lot of the Jess Odom Community Center during weekdays. Turns out that the notice that I sent for the first committee meeting was very specific and only addressed that single motion, so we held another committee meeting today where the additional two motions were passed without public comment on any issue. I will point out that after that meeting, we received a request from Pine Forest requesting some traffic-related stuff by email this afternoon, and so I can probably just pass this on to the chief and see if we can work on some enforcement in that area. But as obligated by ordinances, y'all have been informed of the status of those Traffic and Parking Committee meetings. Is there any questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I will move on to the next order of business, Resolution 2019-25. These are capital improvement revenue bonds. Again, this resolution is just here for introductory purposes, the purpose is not to vote on it today, but I wanted to bring this to y'all to get y'all up to date on what we're proposing here. Unlike virtually all cities, as I've been told, one of the things that we're trying to do, one of the things that I'd like to do, is focus on reducing our debt, refinancing to sort of pay this off earlier. I have had multiple meetings with Ms. Barnett and Shannon Vega, trying to find a way that we can pay off some of this debt earlier. Really quickly, I'll say, this is, this is bonds that are backed by the franchise fees, not millage. So hypothetically, if we were to pay this off, once we pay that off, we'd essentially have, what, approximately a half million dollars of revenue, basically, that we wouldn't be paying out. And so, we put together a proposal to basically work on paying this off, and maybe Ms. Barnett can come up and actually explain some of the numbers a bit better than I can.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Leanne Burnett, I'm with Stevens Public Finance. Thank you for having me this evening. Just like you monitor mortgage rates for the opportunity to refinance your mortgage, we monitor your debt for opportunities to lower your interest cost. It's always better to pay yourself than a bondholder. And so, we had been approaching the mayor about this opportunity to refinance, and he and Ms. Vega said, well, what if we do more? You know, if we have excess funds, we could contribute to pay down the debt and/or increase the annual payment that we're making, how quickly can we make this debt go away? So this one-page memo that you have as part of your materials basically tells you that the 2012 bond issue backed by, or secured by franchise fee revenues currently has a final maturity of November 1, 2037. The balance outstanding is $6,760,000. The maximum payment for that bond issue right now is $515,000, with an average coupon of just under 4%, 3.98%. So we ran a scenario where we assumed the city contributed $150,000 at bond closing, and basically refinanced everything else, and increased the annual payment $25,000 a year. The 2012 issue also has a cash-funded debt service reserve, which would go towards reducing the debt as well. The preliminary results indicated a final maturity of November 1, 2033, so basically you would knock off four years off the debt. The payment, the maximum payment would go up to just under $541,000. The amount of bonds you would issue to do this would be just under 6.5 million, with an estimated interest cost of $280,000. Now, we'll tell you, we ran these numbers a week or two ago, you saw what the Dow did today, we absolutely hope we could beat that number. In terms of gross cash flow savings, this is where it's really significant, even when you factor in the $150,000 contribution, we're talking about $1.2 million in cash flow savings over the life of the original issue. So, it was significant enough that we called the mayor again, and he asked me to be here today. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Right, Lindsey and Jennings, Bond Counsel are here as well, if you have any legal questions. I did look at the franchise fee revenue, and I know that has been a discussion point with the council, and on paper, you can afford this in terms of debt service coverage. Right now, based on my calculation for unaudited 2018 numbers, you're at about a 3.2x coverage. So for every dollar in debt service for these bonds, you have $3.20 to cover it. It would go to a 2.90, or for every dollar you owe, you'd have $2.90. Now, that's just from revenue standpoint, with regard to how those monies are used with the city budget, I would defer to Ms. Vega for that.
So we do have one light, I also have a public comment card, so for any questions, now let's focus them as questions. Do you want to get to the public comment first?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Mr. RJ Mizoney, if you could state your name and address for the record?
RJ Mizoney, 158 Scenic Valley Loop. Basically, I have a few questions. One, anytime you want to reduce debt, I'm impressed with that, and I think you're getting a lot of support out in Maumell, so I hope it passes for that. Second is, I don't remember the last time that you said earlier that a bond renegotiation has not been coupled with yet another project that extends the debt even further, so I think that's another precedent that we really need to set and pass that bond. The questions I have are not for this, but more is understanding the process itself. Trying to learn more about the bonds, it seems to be a rather murky concept, but it appears since it's going on the open market, the potential of raising more revenue than the face value of the bonds is there. At least that's perception I've gotten, and that may have happened at the third-interest bonds. If that is the case, does that money then, can that go back and hit the balance of the, about 6.5 mil, if we get more than that when we sell the bonds? And again, I don't know if that's the case or not, it just seems to be. And as far as the 150, looking at the 2012 bonds, it looks like there's two payments we do, in May and November, so would that November payment count for that 150, and could we put the overage back on the balance of these? Because I know once you renegotiate, your first payment gets turned back, and if we have already budgeted money to spend on the debt, it makes sense to pay it if we can. Third question is, because it's locked to franchise fees, part of the franchise fees, not a specific tax, as revenue goes up, you're not aligned to that, are we held fast to the payment, the posted payment, or could we in the future go, hey, we could afford an extra 50, 60 grand, especially as we get development from the third exit? Is that allowable, or are we stuck with the payments?
Thank you, sir. Those are three great questions, and I bet we may have the answer to at least-
A general budget question for later, though.
Yes, please, if you have information to answer those.
Thank you, sure. So I will attempt to remember all your wonderful points. First, any payments that have been made so far towards the 2012 issue are applied to the refunding. We only issue what we need to issue to pay off the old debt, and I can go through those sources and uses with you at any time, it is public record, and happy to do that. You had an, oh, let's think.
One of the questions was about, I guess, specifically the November, the second payment, and whether that could be used.
...2012 paperwork, at least when it first came out, we sparred it two periods ago.
You do. So public bonds have two interest payments a year, and principal payment once a year, and so that's what you're seeing there.
Okay.
Okay? And then your other question about, could you prepay this new debt early? This structure assumes what we call a five-year call, so basically, you would be locked out of prepayments for five years. We could try to go shorter than that, but that could cost you an interest rate, which negates the benefits of the transaction.
Councilmember Scott, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was any concern over the diminishing franchise fees, whether that's going to be a concern going forward? And you know how I harp on franchise fees all the time? I don't know if we have explored yet whether or not we're allowed to charge any kind of franchise toward companies that express through our city, like Ritter Communication, and whether or not Comcast's expansion into Country Club of Arkansas will generate franchise fees, because it's not telephone, it's cable TV, but using our rides away, costing us money when we work there, so those are general questions about franchise fees, but specifically, will we have, if the franchise fees continue to diminish, are we going to have the money to do what we need to do with them?
So, this is an issue that you brought up a little while ago, and one that the city attorney and I have spoke multiple times about, is trying to make sure that we're charging it everywhere we can, and I know that the city attorney's been going through franchise fee contracts and all their splendor.
And ours is worded a little differently than Little Rock's is, for example, regarding gross revenue and what constitutes gross revenue for Ritter, is one that you mentioned. So that is something that we're looking at, as far as, you know, can we structure it a little bit so that maybe that definition of gross revenue is different in the future? But unfortunately, it's a project that I keep picking up and then having to put down again to go put out another fire, so I will continue to look into that.
What I passed out to everyone is a franchise fee revenue comparison broken out by the actual entities that are submitting franchise fees to us, and I was working with Ms. Vega to try and really understand, I thought I had an assumption of where, why those had declined, and it turns out that maybe I was right, and that maybe it is, as Councilmember Gardner had said, a certain amount of folks cutting the, what is the phrase, cutting the cable-
Cutting the cord.
Cutting the cord, or moving from certain bills to different types. That said, I just got this today, I pretty much only asked to get it today and pass out to y'all, but if you look at it, it looks like we had some spike years in about 15 peak years. Ultimately, though, these numbers far exceed what the amount that would be, far exceed the payments that we'll be making.
Was Comcast not making any franchise payments in 2018 when they came into Maumell?
I don't think, I think they've only just got that up in this year, and so we'll have to take a peek to see at what those franchise fees, when they first came through, it was for internet to the businesses, and then toward the end of the year, they actually started running cable, and so we'll probably need to see-
One, one-
Oh, it's fine.
No, if you wouldn't mind just hopping up to the microphone.
We have received at least one franchise fee. I don't remember what the magnitude was, but I can get that out there.
And I understand this was only through 2018, so that's totally fine.
Oh, I bet it was in 2019.
Right, right, that's why, okay.
Yeah.
I'm just surprised that, I'm a proud cord cutter, and data, TV, internet is only 10% of our franchise fees that we collect, so while more people do cut the cord and transition, that's not as big of a hit as I was expecting, so.
So you're going to see a lot of variability between energy, and I've, my goal has been to see if we can track it down to unusually hot or cold years in energy consumption, but I haven't, I haven't had a chance to delve that far down to see how much those fluctuate, because you'll see a couple hundred thousand dollars between here and 2015, or 100,000, but it goes up and down, especially if you look at Entergy's. But, yeah, so, Councilmember Scott?
I guess I didn't realize that Entergy and CenterPoint were based on volume provided rather than number of customers.
Well, the franchise fee is a percentage of the bill, it's-
4.25.
Okay, okay. Oh, but my real question was, a year ago, there was a CenturyLink truck on Maumell Boulevard and going down Orlane's, and I stopped and talked to them, and they were talking about their cable this and their cable that. We don't have, we don't even have a franchise agreement with them, are they resellers of someone else's-
Those are contractors for-
No, Century, CenturyLink is a provider.
It's the first I've heard of them.
When was that?
It was last summer, because I stopped on the road, and, because I thought, what are they doing here? And, yeah, so, I'm just-
I'll look into-
People in town, yeah, maybe we need to call them and say, what are you doing in our town without paying this franchise agreement? Franchise fee.
That's interesting. Whose lines are they using?
Hmm?
We don't know whose lines, they didn't say anything about the-
They said they were locating their lines because of construction by some other company. So, I mean, I recognize the truck-
We will certainly look into that.
Because I worked for them for 25 years, so, raised a flag with me.
Councilmember Gardner?
Another question on this would be the 150,000 contribution by city at closing, is that something that we would need to do in the form of a budget resolution, or as has been referenced earlier, is that going to be taken from the franchise fees that have been collected for the payment of the note in November? Is that going to require additional funds?
The original idea was that that would come out of the general fund, and the reason we kind of- we kind of dance around that number is to find a number that would, at least my goal was to try and find a number that would end on equal year and so that the last year didn't have a partial payment. I just wanted to shore it up. Are there any additional comments on that? If not, this will be on the, y'all should have also a preliminary sequence of events that kind of outlines this. This isn't something that would go on the ballot. It's not backed by that millage, so it's something that we would just handle internally. At the next council meeting, we will be asking for the resolution to be read and voted on at that time. If the council does go forward with it, we're looking at the public hearing and adopting the bond ordinance on September 16th is the date we're looking at. So that's, that's not too far out. And at that meeting, I anticipate that we would be asking for three readings and the emergency clause like we've done on, in the past for the actual bond issuance. So I just wanted to point that out now. And that'll be on first reading at the next council meeting. The next, and thank you all for coming out. The next order of business, I'm getting lost in my paperwork here, is Resolution 2019-26 amending the...I was told there'd be one general budget question from Mr. Mazzoni. You want to come on up and...
Let me read it first.
I'm sorry?
Let me read it first. Just pertaining to the next...
Oh, is this, is this for the next item on the agenda?
No, no, just general. Just trying to, like everything, you know, I'm interested in the budget and having my model that I'm updating. And I know you, it was mentioned last council meeting that there was an audit that we got extra funds last year for the city sales tax. And I was wondering if you have the numbers because I want to track the accuracy because we came in with about 90, almost just under 100,000 more than my model. So I was just seeing how accurate it, for future changes. But if you don't have that info, that's fine.
The, so are you referring to, we believe that there was an audit done of a private industry that created a spike in...
That's the one.
Sales tax revenue. Are you, I don't know what information we have related to that other than...
If you don't, that's...
They twisted the arms of DFNA. Do you? Okay.
Okay, so I went to a conference last week and it was really, really good. And the commissioner that does the sales tax reporting, and we were all complaining that, you know, you're not giving us information. We need more information so we can understand these taxes. And so the way they start out, I just wanted to give you the whole schmear. When they designate it's a retail, or it's a restaurant, or it's a grocery store, they use the NASICS number that the company is using. Do y'all know what that is? It's a government number that you have to declare your business best fits under it. And so that's used in all the government statistical analysis. So sometimes they're using the wrong number, and during an audit, that number will be corrected. And so you're going to see something weird. In that instance, you also can get more or less, it can even go the other way where they take money away from you because the entity was paying the wrong, collecting the wrong sales tax, and it should have gone to North Little Rock instead of us, that type of thing. But that's all the information that we can get. They will not give us specifically who it is. They said that's not a public record. Yeah, so.
I have, amusingly, I received an email from Ms. Burnett with Stevens not too long ago with a group that's trying to advocate for more info, but signed, sealed, and, you know, non-disclosure information so that internally, the city can make certain decisions and examine things, but sort of be...
Yeah, are we growing? Are we not growing in our sales tax revenue?
Bound, so to speak, to confidentiality. I don't, obviously, there's not a legislative session coming up anytime in the next year. But Councilmember Scott?
I was wondering if we have derived any benefit from internet taxation yet? And if not, when will that happen?
The, I think it went into effect July 1.
Okay, then we won't get it until August.
I'm really...
Because they collect it in July, they report it to the state in August. Okay, then September, they send it to us.
Okay.
So there's a 60-day lag.
Okay, thank you.
So in September, we'll be swimming in piles of money, right? That's what everyone has said. Hopefully that answered your question, Mr. Mazzoni. If not, holler at me later. The next order of business is Resolution 2019-26 amending the 2019 general fund budget.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plasky, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2019-26, a resolution to amend the 2019 general fund budget.
All right, so this is, this is something that was, money was appropriated in 2018 for a vehicle. The grant process took, as long as some grant processes can take. And so we now have the vehicle and the grant. And then we were looking at it, and I've been, one of my goals is to keep 2018 money in 2018 and 2019 money in 2019. So this is by and large mostly money that was approved in 2018 that we started the process and reliance on that, and then didn't hear back from the state in time. Also, I think the original plans were to buy a smaller vehicle, but then, and correct me where I'm wrong, and I'll give you a moment, to actually educate everyone on it after I'm done blabbing. Counting on each other actually gave and made a donation of $4,000 to the city to cover the city's share of a larger vehicle, as I understand it. But Nicole, please come correct everything wrong that I've just said.
Nicole Vogler, Director of Senior Services, and the mayor's absolutely correct. It is a grant that you write in, it's titled 2019. You write it in 2018. I came to the council for permission to even send in the grant for approval, but we never received the funds in the year that it's budgeted. So it's just a, it is a little bit later. My contact at RDOT has said that it was the federal shutdown, you know, that's as far as I can say. We usually get it in about March. Instead of March, we're getting it now. It is a slightly more expensive vehicle, which Counting on Each Other felt strongly that we needed. The other vehicle that I had specked had more narrow, the steps were a little bit more narrow. This vehicle will be a nicer vehicle, and so they made that donation for that. And we have, on Counting on Each Other's board, we have two of the board members, the chairman and the vice chairman are drivers for us, so they're very knowledgeable about those vans. The current van we have, it's a 2007, literally, it was a conversion van where they took the top off, and we've had mold issues ever since. We've tried several times to seal it. It, in my opinion, it's beyond its useful life. I'll be coming to you later, hopefully, to ask them to be surplus. That's the plan.
Councilmember Mosley?
How much, how much in total is this vehicle costing?
The total cost of the vehicle is $49,714, so almost $50,000. And it's a 20% match, $9,943.
Of which 4,000 of that money, of the $9,943, 4,000 of that was donated to the city. So it's not even costing the city the full cost.
Probably about $5,000 and something, $5,900 is really what our cost is for the vehicle. That sounds like a pretty good deal.
It is a great program.
And with that, I'd entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2019-26.
Go for it.
We had a motion in several seconds there. Is there any further discussion on this matter? All those in favor, say yes. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. That brings me...
I need to ask her to stay for Alderman's comments.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh-oh. Mayor's comments. Public hearing, just reminder, this Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 in this room. Come on out. I have a few decisions for the council to make, especially regarding, well, one big decision for the council to make regarding the layout of the council chambers. So that'll be like our other public hearings, it'll be in here. You can come talk to the architects, tell us what an amazing or horrible job we've done, either way it works, but come learn about things. I put on here jail fees. I passed out a letter, the most recent letter that the mayor's signed and submitted to the quorum court. They have a quorum court meeting, I believe on the 13th.
That's correct.
That we'll be going to, that I'll be going to, and maybe others, I'm not sure, to sort of lobby the county to at least reevaluate their method for computing the fees. I went ahead and in the council packet, there is, I put basically everything I had up to this point as far as documents in there for you to look at and how they're coming up with those costs and fees. I've received, I've received and had a long conversation with Justice of the Peace Phil Stowers about the issue, and he's been diligent, he called me back in October talking about this, and trying to make sure that both the county's and city's positions were respected. And I've heard from Justice of the Peace Paul Elliott as well. My inclination is to say that they're probably going to say, thank you for coming, mayors, but these are your fees. Have fun. Maybe not, but we'll see. So I just wanted you to take a look on that and have that information. There was also a request for some additional documents from Councilmember Williams that I think we, I've put in what I have as far as the calculations into the council packet. But moving right along to Planning Commission report, which was Councilmember Jess Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You've noticed that I have remained completely silent during the meeting to save my energy for this report, so I'll try to be as thorough as I can. Regular, the agenda, regular Planning Commission report, July the 25th, 6:30 PM. Meeting was called to order promptly at 6:30 by Vice Chairman John Todd. Chairman Gerschner was unable to attend due to attending a delayed previous meeting. The process removed rather quickly. Into the first item on the agenda, it is just a routine replotting of a plat in Majestic Point addition. No complications. There was a motion to approve, no comments, it passed immediately. The next one is a bit more involved, and I'm proud to see that Chairman, Mr. Todd is present with us this evening so that in case anybody has any questions, it will come before us. There are four variances, requests for variances on this particular. It is the plot of land that is 125 acres, 92, 192 new homes. It's on the old Mammell Highway. It is called an extraterrestrial jurisdiction. It means that it's just far enough outside of our territory that we have regulations of, seeing to requirements that city has or met, but it has nothing to do with us and no financial aspect in our regard. So nonetheless, it is to be copied very similar to Woodlands Edge that Councilmember Vepresen and Tierney and I went and attended with water features, et cetera. They voted 130 trees to go in there, so it's supposed to be quite nice. The first, of the four variances, the next three hinged on the first one, which is a request for the regard in design of standards for private streets. So if anybody has any question about that, I'm sure Mr. Todd will be able to answer it. But there was no, the person representing the organization was not present. There was no comments. Again, it was, a motion was made to pass and it passed immediately. So we went through the process very quickly, and all the variances were okayed. So apparently that process is in motion. The last one, the third item on the program, was, as we all know, has to do with the moving of the pizza location into the old, Domino's Pizza into the old Sonic location. It sounds like they're going to have some very pretty exciting upscale ideas about making it a really neat outfit location. And they have been very, very cooperating with Mr. Neary. He complimented them on how willing they were to work with him and meet all the requirements. And with that, that completed all the requirements, and it was a motion to adjourn. It was passed very quickly, and the meeting brought to an end in about 10 or 12 minutes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember comments. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Nicole, for staying for a minute. I had some good news about our senior center for you tonight that I was going to present, but it made me smile when I saw her because she's much better at presenting this to you than I am. Would you mind telling them about this?
We were contacted by the city of Cabot as they progress in their plans to take over their senior center or bring their senior center in-house with their city. And it was such a, I was so excited to get the phone call and to speak with the city of Cabot because it, you know, it just shows the respect for our services, the village that we have with our volunteers, the help that the city, we couldn't do it without the city, without y'all, without our members. And so to have the city of Cabot recognize that was great. We've also given assistance in the last year to the city of North Little Rock with their start of a transportation program. And we've also visited about a year and a half ago with the city of Springdale as they did something similar to what Cabot's doing. So I was really excited, so I came out in the hallway and said, ah, guess what? So thank you for giving me that chance.
It's quite an honor for us to be asked to help another city develop their senior services. That's how good our senior services are.
And amusingly, Nicole had told me that, and then I was at CDI this last week where I got to know the Cabot mayor, and he was talking about his senior program and wanting to do better. And I said, well, have you reached out to, you know, Mammell? We kind of do good. We, I take all the credit clearly. And he goes, oh, yeah, we've reached out to them. We've heard tremendous things. And so I think it means a lot when we can do stuff for our residents, but we're doing things and y'all are doing things for residents and members that is echoing throughout the area. And so it's great to be a bellwether in that area. And so thank you very much. You guys do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Councilmember Williams?
I just have a quick question about these jail fees.
Yes, ma'am.
So according to this, it's going to be a daily fee, right? It's not going to be an interlocal agreement anymore, right?
Correct.
Okay. Which is all well and good because when we had the interlocal agreement, I don't know if you remember this, there, we were paying flat fees and the jail was not accessible to us because half the time it was closed. And so we got, we had so many people who were arrested and just cited out because we had nowhere to take them. So, I mean, I haven't looked at this closely enough to see if it's a fair daily wage, but, I mean, daily fee. But anything's better than what we had, I think, as far as the interlocal agreement goes. You know, when you go to your quorum court meeting, you might want to remember those days when... days when the jail was closed and we did not have access to it, even though we were paying for it.
Okay.
You might want to ask for a refund, I don't know.
I, I think what they would say is, well, that's still less than what it would have been if we counted up the days, based on at least the position.
But at least we would have, we would use it. I mean, it was, it would be there for our use, if, if we're paying by the, by the day.
Yes.
Ideally, that, that is true. I will say, even though the jail is not closed, there are many occasions where we send people to the jail, and they cite them out whether we want them to or not. This is especially true with any nonviolent offense, like we've sent a couple of different people on charges of possession with intent to deliver, where we would like for them to have been kept, and they immediately cite them out within 24 hours, so they don't even have a chance to set bond. So some of that, you know, we don't get to use it, I guess, as much as we would like at times. I think one of the main disputes is that they're not accounting for their revenue. I mean, they're just looking at, so if they're, if we're generating costs out of the courts that are going to offset that...
Taxpayer money still goes toward running the jail, so we're, we're paying in addition to.
Right. So if our court generates funds that then support that jail, we don't get any credit for that.
Right. And that needs to be addressed.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Holt's presentation about the new neighborhood out there on 365. It, it's, the developer's really proud of developing a green neighborhood, and I called Holloway Engineering, I've got some plans for the neighborhood, if anybody wants to look at them, they're just laying there on the desk, if you want to look at them afterwards. That's all I've got.
I had meant to point out and wanted to, I actually think the brainstorming session went decent today.
That was excellent.
Many, I, I think it went good, but I'm hesitant, because I don't know if other people agree with me or not. It is video recorded, I believe, and should be posted online in due time. So if you're, if, I know we had some folks that weren't able to make it for a myriad of reasons, so please, if you get a chance, and you want some fun, and just get your popcorn and enjoy yourself. If there are no further, Councilmember comments, City Attorney?
Just really quick, the FOIA presentation was last week that I did, ask you guys to look into watching on the web. If you did not get to watch that, especially the second hour, if you didn't get to at least listen to the second hour, I've requested the recording. The slides are, the PowerPoint slides are available online, but the audio was informative, so I have requested a recording of that, and I can, we can pass that around. So let me know if you did not get to attend that or listen to it.
Madam City Clerk?
I sent an email out asking for a Planning Commission liaison for the month of August. The Planning Commission Subcommittee and also their regular meeting has been canceled. So thank you to those who were willing to volunteer, but we don't need it, so, thank you. That's it.
So just please note in the FYI, there was an interesting email from Mayor Watson with information that he gleaned that there's at least discussions of the state possibly widening Count, Mammell Boulevard from Counts Massey to 430, and actually doing work on 430, if they were to get their sales tax next year. So we're looking at, the sales tax election will be in November of 2020. I don't anticipate they'd immediately jump on anything related to us, I, I don't know. But it was interesting information, so I thought I'd pass that on to y'all. And with that, I'd just remind you, public hearing Wednesday in this room from 4:00 to 7:00, please stop by and learn. And if there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We've got a, several motions in a second. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Meeting is when?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, 4:00 to 7:00.